I think they call Limminster Planning Board to honor for June 3, 2019 at 6:30. We have a hearing continued, open public meeting for a site plan approval for Richard Road and Montrose Street. Now, there's two more hearings, and I'll open those up as a minute. You can get started, but at a minute apart, so, but then we'll have all three open at the same time. Okay? So, you can get, you know, get your stuff up and make your start getting ready for your presentation, and in a minute I'll get the information.
Let me jump right in.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is a continuance of what we talked about, was it a month ago, six weeks ago? And we tried to listen to what some of the recommendations were. This is at the intersection of Central Street, Richard Road and Montrose Street, next day the Johnny Appleseed Plaza and the Southern Woods Convenium Project. We have a 20,000 square foot lot, and we got what we're asking to put two duplexes on the property separated by 15 to 17 feet. So, I'm gonna let Mika run with the ball here.
Okay, can I hold the next hearing? Okay, continued public hearing for special permit approval for Richard Road and Montrose Street, that's a use.
Okay, a use. This, we're in the area located in the commercial district, and when we are applying for it is the use special permit to allow residents to use vacant existing lot, applying the closest, which is the RV zoning district regulations for density and setback requirements, coupled also with the setbacks for the commercial district. So, the use permit, we had another lots on the corner of Montrose and Sartell, which we had used the same special permit request for, we had a few vacant lots, and we are proposing to do the same on here. It's again commercially zoned lot, it's vacant, and existing parking, and we want to utilize that existing parking for two duplexes.
Okay, that existing parking is for the adjacent property, correct?
Yes, for, it's...
For the adjacent, the commercial building in the front.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, we are part of this site plan approval, we're also showing how this can be just reconfigured, because it's a very broad paved area.
Right. What is the total, what's the total requirement for the use of that parking lot for the commercial portion?
That's a different property. This is...
Yeah, you have the correct, but that parking lot is for that front property, isn't it?
Today, today it's being used by this.
Okay.
That's correct. So, the gray area, I'm sorry for jumping in, John, the gray area has the parking for the four units.
Right.
Below it, where it's, there's no color, is parking with commercial building, and that, both of them meet regulation, exceed regulations.
Okay, so the total of the commercial building and that building, you have sufficient parking for everybody?
Yes, zoning, I need five, and we can fit 13.
Okay.
And for the apartments, you need...
I need six, and we have eight. We're providing for the type of, because it's gonna be two bedroom units, when you have two bedroom, one and a half, so, realistically, we're providing two for this.
Good.
Okay.
Because there's no garage, right?
No, no. We don't have the room, because we are on a corner lot, we have two front setbacks, and it really makes the...
No, that's good, as long as the whole building accommodated and next to spot for each unit.
Hold for a second, I'll open up the other hearing. Over the continuing public hearing for special permit approval for Richard Road and Montrose Street, that density.
So, going back to what Paul said, we have a 20,005 square foot lot, and we are proposing a density of 5,000 square feet per unit. So, we have four units, that's 5,000 square feet. That was the special permit density, and that was the density for special permit in the RV district.
Right. One question I had, nature of people, and this is kind of a high mental address sometimes. Would that parking lot be into the side like that? I will guarantee the people will park, wanna park on the street in front of their unit. Okay? Now, that road is currently fairly wide, yes, I think it's close to, is it close to 30, 32?
Top of my head.
Okay, which is not bad, but it could, now, that's still a private way, isn't it? Is Montrose, is that a...
Currently, I believe it is.
It's going before, it's with the DPW right now for approval.
Okay, so in the future, though, you wanna go to, you wanna go, have the road accepted?
Yes.
Okay.
It's paved 30, how much is paved?
30 feet. Yeah.
Put up parking signs.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you could put up, now, the...
They put up signs in the parking lot, saying for condo only, or...
No, 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 on the street, that's not above, that's on the street. You know, if you could put up, you know, part of it, put up some no parking signs on the street itself.
Oh, no parking signs on the street?
On the street.
Yeah, but that's not up to him, that's up to the traffic.
No, see, it's still, it's not a, it's still a public way. Not accepted, but it's a public way.
It's a public way.
So, that, we'd have to go, he'd have to petition the city council, that's all we can do. Okay, so we can make that a condition, that you petition the city council to add no parking there, would that be a problem?
So, but we went the opposite way, just to control traffic. We did not have, those units have driveways in the front.
Right, I realize that.
So, we were paying attention to the safety there, and that's why it's...
Yeah, yeah, just a drive, just a walkway, I realize that. Okay, you have a walkway, but, you know, I know if I lived there, I'm kinda lazy. But I'd park out front, and I'd walk into my unit. Okay? I don't know if it's gonna be a problem or not, the parking, because it's, how much traffic do we have there, would that be an issue?
Given the size of the road.
Just bring it forward, everybody knows up front. I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but I just wanna make sure that we're well aware of it up front.
The intent wasn't on street parking, that's what we were...
Right, yeah, I realize that, and you don't have any driveways there, and that's fine. And you know better than I do the amount of traffic, how much people, traffic runs through there, back into the plaza.
So, we have only four units in the back, and that's the only people that use it, so it's really wide, I don't know the traffic count for this, and it's, it's above the Egress Boulevard to Johnny Appleseed, so there's, I wouldn't know how to quantify it right now, there's not a lot of traffic from up there.
Okay. I'm not making, what we'll do is, if it comes up as a problem, we know, they would have to address it in the, in the future.
Yeah.
And that, where you'd have to apply to the city council for, okay, for no parking. Okay. Hearing is spoken, do you have anything else you wish to add?
Snowstorm, John.
Yes.
Yeah, we have almost four times the amount of snowstorm. Oh, good, I'm glad, it's nice to see the two buildings.
That's a good idea. Two in unit. Yeah, just a quick recap for the chairman's benefit, we had come before, and this was one large building.
Oh, I've seen those drawings. Okay, yeah, I'm well aware of that, what was that before?
So, that's really the change that occurred, and due to that, it just changed the utility potential, the water solution actually obviously, like we just separated, and actually simplified the, that's how we count this.
Okay. Do you have any else wish to add?
No.
I'll open it up to the floor, if I have anyone from the floor that wish to make a comment. Yes, sir?
John Ellin and a little Sartell Row, on the lower side, and he did address, I can tell, that he wanted to make Johnny Appleseed out of it, so that we don't really, and the neighbor too bad, I spoke to him this evening, and Paul answered our question, that he was leaving all the Appleseed in front of the fencing. I had a question about the sloping, which he answered probably. Other than that, he's worked well with us, I think it's a great idea, great plan, set up a commercial, hoping all there, so, we're for it, the neighbors are, just pass it on.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have anyone else wishes to speak, or any questions, comments? I'll ask the board again.
My question, the department had comments, the same...
There's no additional, as from what was presented at May 6.
Okay, so we had those previous.
So, a motion, a motion to close the 6:30 hearing.
I have a motion made in second to close the 6:30 hearing to public, open public meeting for site plan approval for Richard Road's. Any discussion? Here none? I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no.
A motion to close the special permit approval hearing at 6:30, one second.
I have a motion made by Sal, second by Paul, to close the continuing public hearing, special permit approval for Richard Road and Montrose for use. Do we have any additional questions on that? All in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries.
Motion to close the special permit hearing at 6:32 for density, one second.
Motion made by Sal, second by Paul, to continue public hearing, a special permit approval for Richard Road and Montrose Street on density, special permit multifamily. Any further discussion? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. Thank you. We will discuss this further on down in the agenda.
6:40.
Yes, 6:40. Yes, 40. We're good. Why don't we say that the right one? Just to open the, open the continued public hearing, definitive subdivision approval for Mary Avenue Extension, 1157R Main Street. Okay, I have a letter on that.
Chair, you have a letter from Anthony Queeds?
Yes. On behalf of our client, James Exeris, I request a continuance of the June 3, 2019 public hearing for Mary Avenue Extension Subdivision. We have recently received information from Limminster Conservation Commission pertaining to wetlands within the property that may impact project layout. This information is going to be reviewed and continued coordination with the Conservation Commission. Request our public hearing to be continued to the next scheduled planning board meeting on June 17, 2019. Okay, accept that letter into the record. And do I have anyone here that will make any comments on this project? Okay, here are none, I'll accept the, introduce a motion that does be continued to June 17 time, Elizabeth?
Well, we already have three hearings that day, 6:30, 6:31, and 6:32, so...
6:35, 6:40.
We could do 6:40, we could do 6...
What's the 6:30 one on?
It's 1-2-7 Street, the offsite solar system.
That's gonna take a little bit of time.
6:40 is the motion.
6:40?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion by Fred, saying, oh, by Paul? Okay, thank you by Fred, to continue this public hearing.
6:40.
Okay, until June 17, 6:40. Any further discussion? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. Right on schedule, 6:45, continued public hearing for definitive subdivision approval for Meadowlands at Willard Street, along northeast side of Willard Street, including 671 Willard Street. That hearing is now open. I have a lot, as discussed yesterday, we are still awaiting the final draft of the HOA from the attorney. As this document is not ready yet, and on behalf of the applicant, Henning and Engineering Incorporated, we're requesting that the continued public hearing scheduled for June 3, 2019 be continued to June 17, 2019. Please confirm receipt and acknowledge of this request, as soon as information is available, we would forward for review. Sincerely, Bill Henning. Okay, accept this into the, into the information. Okay, and do I have anyone here that wish to speak on this matter, on Willard Street subdivision?
I move that until June 17, 6:45.
Move this one to July?
July 15.
Yeah.
July 15 is open, there's nothing on that date.
Okay, yeah.
Not yet, close to that?
Not yet.
Well, would you rather?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's pull it, you wanna do it July, or you wanna keep it in July?
If we have nothing, our money...
So, if you got nothing scheduled, then you could have a day up.
You could have a...
We're gonna, we're not, we wouldn't meet that time.
It's gonna be, we only have one meeting in July, one meeting in August.
We only have one meeting in July.
Stephanie says that we already have something coming in July.
We only have two things, we only have two things right now, but you...
Yeah, but we gotta, but we gotta set up, before we set this, if we push this to July, we gotta get such a schedule for, we get...
We already did.
You set the schedule for July. So, what is the date for that?
July 15.
That is the 15th, okay.
It's the 3rd of May in August. So, 6:30, July 15.
Yeah, 'cause this letter says June 17, so we're gonna change that to July, okay, 15.
6:30.
6:30. Okay. I have a motion made in second to accept the letter and reset the schedule to July 15 at 6:30. Any further discussion? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. Okay. Okay, regular meeting, call to order.
Patrick Krola?
Here.
Craig Fergers?
Yeah.
Paul Wazier?
Here.
Salvatore Giappone?
Yeah.
John Susan?
Yep.
Carl Vittoriasso?
Yeah.
Thomas Cargan? Excused.
Okay. Minutes of previous meetings, May 6.
Make a motion, accept them.
Just for note, the May 6 meeting minutes were presented in front of you as you came in.
Yeah, they're in the schedule.
Sure. Second.
Yep.
You had every word, yes.
Looks good.
It is good.
Okay. Okay, May 6, 2019, I leave a motion to approve.
Paul, are you good?
Okay, no, Fred, Fred, Fred make a motion to approve. Pat, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. May 20.
Those are in process.
They're in process, okay. Plan submitted, 3.1, site plan approval for 280 New Lancaster Road, map 300 Lot 1.
Yep, we have a new site plan has been submitted for 280 New Lancaster Road. We don't have that in private property yet.
So, we can schedule that for year end, six, I moved that we schedule it for July 15, you need time to advertise anyway, because it has a special permit for 6:45, second.
Okay, so I have for July 15, 6:45.
We only have the one thing right now at 6:40.
Yeah, but that's, that's...
27 lots.
Okay, so site plan approval for 20, 280 New Lancaster Road, map 300 Lot 1, is scheduled for July 15 at 6:45. I have a motion, I have a second, second on the tab, any discussion? All in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. Special permit approved for 280 New Lancaster Road, map 300 Lot 1, for the use to cowash.
I got 6:46.
6:40. Okay, this beat July 15 at 6:46. Motion by Fred, second by Carol, any discussion?
No.
Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. 3.3, NNR approved for Hillery Road and Howard Terrace, map 413, fossil 57, 19, 20B, and 23.
Have some reduced copies, if that's easy.
You like those, you don't like the big writing?
No, because...
I know, it sounds...
You're trying to kill the truth.
You prefer the smaller?
We'll take the smaller.
All right, good evening, my name is Larry Savio of Henning and Engineering. What we have for you tonight is a closed house, this is currently owned by Donald J. Anderson Real Estate Trust, Peter Anderson trustee. The objective is to combine these individual lots, and I choose to do a little better on the assessors on that. These are currently what the assessor has these lots divided as. This is the result from an old subdivision of Harvard Terrace back in the 50s. So, in addition to combining these lots, we're cutting out a lot here, Lot 7A, adds enough frontage and carry of residence A zone, and the rest of this would be, it would remain as a single lot, approximately 11 acres, also in excess of, yeah, we have frontage for residence A zone.
Motion to endorse, it's pretty simple, pretty clean. It's all there, so he's just cutting out 7A, and the rest is gonna remain the same.
Well, you're gonna combine that into one, it'll all be one lot.
Into a single lot.
Okay, you'll subdivide it later.
And your, and your frontage is on Howard?
Correct, frontage for Lot 7B is on Howard, frontage for Lot 7A is on Hillery.
Okay, did someone second, Sal?
A motion by Sal, second by, I can catch it, Paul? Okay, to approve, any further discussion?
Endorse.
Okay, none, make it, motion is still endorsed, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, you're welcome. Continued site plan, 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, have all been continued?
No, no.
No, we're...
4.1, 4.2.
2, 4.3.
The three.
We closed.
Closed.
They're closed, so those are, those are closed, that's closed.
Can I make a motion to set all three at the same time?
Yeah, take those.
Now, we should go, we have a special permit.
Change it, they're special permits.
That's right.
Okay, for Richard Road and Montrose, the site plan approval.
Motion to approve the site plan with any and all conditions from the city departments.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend approval with conditions from city departments. Do you have any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. 4.2, continue special permit approval for Richard Road and Montrose Street, the use is a special permit for density.
Make a, go ahead, Sal.
Of use, rather.
Motion to approve with all the pound and head comments, and notation, and it's a nice plan now, you know, and they listen to the advice, they listen to our advice, and I think it all came out really well, so...
Second.
I have a motion made in second, do we have any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. Continued special permit approval, Richard Road and Montrose Street, density and special permit multifamily. The only comment I wanna make here is that for the applicant to monitor the traffic, if there's any issues, that recommended that he apply to the city council for no parking on that road, but that, that'll be left up to something in the future. Okay, it's not a requirement, it's just for us to make a note that it's for them to monitor.
Yeah, but then you can't make this plan, but...
No, it's not a condition, I can't, I can't make, because we didn't do a traffic study, and I can't, we can't make a condition on it, so that, I'd have to make, the only thing that we could do is, it wouldn't be right now to make a condition to put no parking, because you'd have to go to, for him to read a petition to go to the city council.
I don't think it's necessary to be...
I don't think so, but I just wanna...
Yeah, because, you know what, if there's problems with people parking at the units, then I think they'll address it long before anybody else.
You think they'd help for us enough, the reputation?
Yeah.
Okay. So, my motion for the empty special permit, motion, who made the motion?
Someone has it.
So, I'll make it now?
Sal?
Second.
Motion to approve with the pound and head comments.
Okay, and I would say from Carol, any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries.
So, just to clarify, Chair, your note about the applicant is to monitor the traffic, and if there are any issues, petition the city council for no parking?
It's just a note.
That's just a note?
It's not a condition.
Not a condition.
Yeah. That'll be taken care of before we go anywhere.
Yeah, 4.4, continued public subdivision approval, Mary Avenue Extension, 1157 Ria Main Street has been continued.
6:40.
Okay, 4.5, continued public hearing, definitive subdivision approval for Meadowlands at Willard Street, along northeast side of Willard Street, including number 671 Willard Street, that has been continued.
6:30, July.
Yeah, voted for July 15. New business, we don't have any. Communications, planning board recommendation for city council petition 58-19, Michelle Powell and 10 registered voters declare and accept Cleveland Street as the street of the city of Limminster, Legal Affairs, and they give it, you know, they refer it to us. Did you say there were people coming?
Yeah, Chair, I heard that there were people coming.
Okay. This is not a hearing, okay? So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna ask the board to suspend the rules, to let you say something, okay? So what I'm going to do is I want to ask the board to suspend the rules to let you say something, okay? But then, then we'll refer this, we schedule it. Okay?
Just to ask you a question.
Yeah. There's, there's several letters that we received.
Do we have any answer to that?
We have to, well, because it's a city council petition, we have to schedule it.
No, we don't, that's only
No, no, this is a recommendation.
That's only for zoning. This is just a street acceptance.
Yeah, this is street acceptance.
This question seems particularly important.
Well, yeah. Typically, we would, on street acceptance, we would get referrals from the DPW, okay, which we have. And they're concerned, they have several concerns. And are a site watch, so that we can look at the road, a few kinds of condition. Where it's not a normal hearing, it's a, which, because we just make a recommendation. I want to allow these people to speak. You have some comments? Will you just stand up and identify yourself?
So, I'm manager of Grady. We live at twenty one, we live at twenty one Cleveland Street.
Okay, which house is that?
The last house on the right.
The last house on the right, where the road ends?
Yes.
In further detail?
The road actually ends at my driveway, but it still continues on gravel until the end of the street where the fire hydrant is, which is getting consumed by bamboo.
Yeah.
About every two weeks, by hand. So there's just the, there's no drainage. Water just, you guys have come to the road and they made patches every now and then, and they just put patches on top of areas that need to be dug out and actually like compacted and actually we've done something with the beginning from the first two houses, there's a, there was a hole there that was so big, it took a quarter of my truck's tire to get it through it. And they came, they did a patch, but it's a patch, the rest of it's all broken already, so the patch isn't going to do anything. It's the same thing over by, you know, by Home Depot. They patched it, and they patched it, and they patched it, but then they had to go back and they had to tear it all and write it down and do it correctly. We have no drainage, it's just the, the road needs to be repaved.
It drains into our street.
It drains into, it drains into our yard. So we have a nice little stream that goes from the front of our house, that goes all the way through our yard, the like kids' play area.
With all the runoff from the street.
And I have gravel in the front of my yard, the first ten, fifteen feet or so.
Under child's things.
I'm going to try to give you folks some, a little history of just what's happened there. I'm going from memory now, so. But some time ago, we, we had approved your house, I believe it was. It was a special permit. Okay? And the only requirement, and that was more of a dirt road, it was starting further up. And it was the builder's requirement to take in and to, to finish the road up to your driveway. I'm not sure how long, how long ago was that?
We, we are not the first owners of that house, so it was, I think, two thousand and seven? Oh, two thousand and four, two thousand and one.
Okay, two thousand, okay, that's, I thought it was good since, yeah.
Yeah. We, we've only been in that house for seven years. We actually didn't know it was an unacceptable road until it started, it's washing away our driveway.
Right.
It's crumbling and falling. And so when I reached out to the city asking where it is on the paving list, I mean, we're a little street, I knew it wouldn't be high up, they're like, oh, it's unacceptable, actually, we're not going to do anything. So when we moved in, I didn't even know it was an unacceptable road.
Okay, number one, drawing the long list.
Oh, I, I understand that.
One of the issues that the, the DPW brought up was the ownership of the road. Okay? That's pretty much what the city council, the first thing that has to be determined. Okay? Now
Is it in your deed? Do you know if it's in your deed that, you know, when you bought the property, that half of that road, because it is a private way, is owned by you?
That is not what we were told at the time that we purchased.
We were told it wasn't a private way because it's probably, you know, trash collection and everything already on the street, so.
And we have a recent resident who did, he's not here tonight, he had something else he had to do, but he recently had his property surveyed professionally. And the surveyor did not say that our properties went to the middle of the street.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think it did.
No.
Okay?
They said it was exactly
He's got iron bars in the corners of all of his property, so like, it's like one sixty-fourth of an inch of where his property is.
And it ends far up before the street starts.
Yeah. See, that's, that's an issue that's going to have to be. We're going to have to go back to the original contractor, Mr. Bolduc.
Yeah.
Benjamin Builders.
Benjamin Builders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He did such a great job with our house.
So anyway, I am observing comment. But anyway, that deed, and we'll have to, it's not only your house, but the researchers, and I'm sorry to say that the research, and you're probably, the city council is going to, should be telling you the same thing, is that you folks are going to do the research and find out where the deeds are and just what they are. Now, once you can identify those and get them to, so they can be transferred to the city, then
Well, if, if
Then, yeah.
If they, if it goes to the middle of the road, if no
If, no, if, but if it goes to the middle of the road, then you have to get it rededed and surveyed. And there's a whole lot of issues there that I'm only touching the surface. So, but it has been done, okay? And and I truly believe that the, the city should have a budget, in their budget, monies for roads like these that were, at the time they were done, they met the requirements that we had. Okay? And, but those requirements change all the time. Yours not bad. There were some, there were some streets that had been around for a hundred years, and they're still not accepted. Okay? They're public ways. And we take care, you're surging, and in, and in some towns, that street wouldn't even get plowed. Okay? So limits to plows the street, so you get, you get all the services, but I hate to say it, pavement, pavement is low end until they actually own it, so. And what I'm saying is I'm trying to give some information. And we'll come up with a recommendation back to the city council, but I think you've got some work ahead of you. Good luck, you'll learn, you'll learn a lot about roads, you'll learn a lot about getting things surveyed, and and I'm going to leave it at that. I, I think that I, I truly believe that the city should have a separate budget for all these unacceptable ways. And there should be a process of where they go forward and get it cleaned up. But it doesn't seem to be interesting getting that done, so there are lists, and there are lists, and there are lists of all these unacceptable streets and that, that exist in the city. And, and they're just not getting done. We patch them, and even, you know, just for safety reasons, they patch by rights that aren't even supposed to go in there and patch them, so.
They've had to bring a full truckload of just gravel, just to make it able to be plowed.
Yeah.
In the middle of the snow, because the day they hit a plow pit so hard that it woke me up at two in the morning, and then a ton wheeler came in, they had to level it out, and it was so bad.
I went there today, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yep.
Did you swim in the lake?
I made it through. I have four-wheel drive truck.
That's the only reason you did, my friend.
So if we do, I was told by Ellen Racine in the planning department this week that we, she looked at some deeds, and apparently the language says that we own to the middle of the road.
Well, I want to tell you another thing, Ellen should have referred back to our planning department, okay? Do you have a note from that, that Ellen talked to these people?
Hi, this is the first I've heard.
Okay, could you please get a note from her, on what she discussed, if you can?
She, yeah, she looked up, I think, our two deeds, just out of, they said, if you could find any information out, because, you know, I work across the hall in the health department.
Okay, you're right.
I'm Michelle, yeah.
Okay.
So she was just kind of looking at the deeds, and she showed me the language, and I said, I had no idea that that's what that meant, but she said, it means we own to the middle of the road. So if, if we do own to the middle of the road, what does that mean? We're still on our
What would happen is, you know, yeah, you would
Scare her, order.
Okay, well, what would have to happen is, your property would have to be re-surveyed. A new deed, okay, would have to be created, combining all of those half lots. Okay? And once they were combined together into one road, then you could be, you know, then you would take and present it to the city. Okay, to accept it. Then they would have the deed for the road. Step one. Okay? Now you're going to have to get it, the next step would be to, how do I get it paved? Now, in other cases, I think it was bicentennial, a number of years ago. It was even tougher shape, and there was probably twenty or twenty-five houses. They actually went there and got an assessment from everybody. And they got an abatement, and then that abatement money was used to, to build the road, to complete the road. And then it was accepted by the city. The rules, the way they are today, is we have to, to accept the road, it needs the drainage, it needs curvings, it needs, you know, good, a good foundation, and if anybody from there, like these subdivisions that we talked about tonight, we will get verification before, we put a bond on those today. So before they pay, and that was none at that time, to make sure that the contractor completes the project. Okay? But we don't, we don't, we didn't do that, and we do that now, we couldn't do that before. And the laws have changed, and now allow us to do it. So now we put a bond on, it might be thirty, forty, it could be a hundred thousand, I'm not sure. And then the contractor has to, once he completes the job, meets all our criteria of a subdivision regulation, then that subdivision, then, then is accepted by business. Goes a petition to the city council, yeah, meets the criteria of the, of the subdivision regulations, we'll accept it as a road. We can waive certain things. Sometimes they waive the sidewalks and lighting, and there's a lot of issues like that, so, and some have been it, but they've been repaved to like eighteen feet, I think you're right in that, that category. So they repaved to eighteen feet, they made to be a, you know, come up with an agreement, and then, then it gets accepted. And once that's happened. But to get there, there are a number, a number of steps, and whatever the city council, it gets into their hands, and, which I can't, I don't know what they would do. Okay? So we're trying to help, I'm trying to give you some information.
Appreciate it.
Okay, all is not lost, but you know, but I, and like you said, I went there today, and you're right, and everything you say is, is accurate. So I have no problem with that, but we, you know, how do we correct it is, is the big question that I have.
We have another neighbor.
This is another neighbor.
Yes, ma'am.
Sue Downing. I'm the one at the very end of the street, so these holes in front of my house, is there any way we can get somebody down there just to fill them a little bit?
I don't, that's a, that's a request that maybe to the DPW.
To the DPW.
See, your house was there before we did their house, and that was a dirt road.
I spent almost twenty grand to make that road, never had issues.
Yeah.
Did all gravel, and then when everybody came in, they dug my gravel up, they turned it upside down, they destroyed the road. And then I was up here fighting for them to pave it all the way down, and it got shut down, so.
Yeah. That, that is a definitely unique situation there. And you have the same thing, now, do you have the deed for your road up? Is that a separate deed on your
No, I have to look and read it, I don't, I'm going to go home and read it tonight, because I didn't realize.
That's, that's the first step, is to get the deeds squared away. Once you get that squared away, you get the first step, and then maybe we come up with a process, you know?
Takes a big piece away. If you don't own up to the middle of the road, that's a big chunk going away.
I don't remember seeing it in my deed, but
There may be a separate deed somewhere.
I don't, well, no, it would go to the owner.
Yeah, good, good.
So if I call the DPW, they might help out and get that, did you go way to the end and see the fake hole?
Yeah, yeah, I
Those are huge.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I turn around down there today.
It's like a lake, yeah.
It's on the dry side right now.
It is.
It's on the Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so find that
Yeah, the gray truck that told, turn around here, yeah, you were coming up, that was me.
The case, they go home, and then the city already, you know, is in control of it, then that makes it a lot easier for the assessors.
Okay?
That's the number one thing you're going to do, is figure out who owns up to where.
Okay. What sections?
Okay, cool.
And I don't know what the language was that Ellen pointed out.
I
But Elizabeth
She's got it, I can walk
Yeah, that would be good to have, so, and that would be good to share with everybody else, so if they have that same language, and if that in fact is the case, that would, that's what it means.
Okay.
Have you seen the DPW's questions?
Yes.
So you know what things you have to give the answers.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you.
For discussion.
So we take no action?
Yeah, until we know
Yeah. Recommend no action, okay, so you say
We're, we're just going to sit on it till we find out
We need more information. Yeah.
Because that's the biggest piece, you know, and we'll continue it until we have that information, and we can move it forward.
Okay, absolutely, that makes sense.
Yeah, it is, just
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You're nice.
You too.
I would suggest, the motion would be, reference back to the city council, and no recommendation at this time until the resolution of the deeds.
Resolution, ownership of the road.
Ownership of the road. Ownership of the road is established. That's out. Sound by Sal.
Yeah. Do we do a second?
We have to refer, we have to
Say that we're
It's just a recommendation back to the city council.
For us, to recommend to them.
Because this may be, this may be scheduled on their agenda.
Right, yeah. So we're just like We have a society, but we have
Okay.
They're going to get the same letter from the DPW.
Yeah.
Right.
It went to the city clerk.
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion myself, seconded by Pat. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Mine, Development Director's report for June third.
I have a couple of things to report. I got invited to speak at two events since the last meeting. One was a chamber event, they have a leadership group that goes through a five-month training process, and they hear from different community representatives, and I went and spoke to them and told them all about what the board does, and what the planning department does to serve the public, and they were very enthused and excited to hear from us. And then the second one, also very exciting, Fitchburg State University. Paul, you really started us with something here, because there's no dialogue between our department and staff at Fitchburg State University. They want to know what they can do to have more community outreach between their students and us. And so we want to work with them for future interns, perhaps one in the fall, for continued success, so that was great.
Fantastic.
Who is I arguing with you?
Jane Wong.
Yeah, she's the right person.
Yeah.
That's awesome. That is great.
Very good.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Okay.
Sal. Executive session, none.
We don't have one?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion. I have a motion, Sal's a motion.
My answer.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.